To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Dave.
Welcome back.
Yes.
Chairman? Andrew Rader been here. Okay, approve the agenda.
Amended agenda.
Amended agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Both carried. Approve the minutes of eleven twelve and eleven thirteen.
Uh, so moved. Uh, the fine need. I didn't see anything out of order.
No, sorry, the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carried. General public concern. Anybody here complaining?
No.
You got the floor.
So, have, I understand Bruce went down.
I drove up yesterday.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, no, Lieutenant.
Okay, and so what do you think?
I like Ben's idea, just to give the lowest water off the road. That's my thought.
Well, on the north side of that, uh, one road, the ground is high, the field is higher than the...
Than the road.
Than the road.
Mm-hmm.
So, where is it gonna drain to? It's just not set back.
Typically, isn't the water just sink right back into the ground as the river goes down?
Right.
So, it'll get off the road sooner than it'd get off the, before...
It's not gonna get off, it's, the water table is in the ground, whether you got dirt on it or the rock on it. It's not gonna go off. That, that road is really never washed out, ever. Other than there's a couple spots where I think it skips off, and it's these spots, because of the water table.
Well, I'm not an engineer, and I don't have any claim to be. I just know that what our goal is, is to try to be able to drain some of that and...
Like I said, I, I don't know that that's the, the, the cure-all answer, because it is. Pete ground, it's right next to the river, uh, no maintenance has really been done, other than putting a little bit of rock on it, which... When you get years like we had, was it two, three years ago, Pocahontas County set up a plant there at John Warren's pit, and they... Kept crap out of the road.
Yeah, and that's sunk the road a lot, and then it pushed the side buck.
Did you guys ever get any reimbursements?
From running the road down?
No, I, I argued back and forth with, uh, their county engineer.
Why don't, why, speaking of that, why don't they have some, I mean, it wasn't a, wasn't them.
It wasn't the county, it was the county's project. And that was their contention, or their argument, is that their contractor elected to set up there.
That's what they would.
I figured you should've got some compensation.
Remember when you went looking at that road? Yeah, we felt the same way, but like Ben said, county's holding themselves non-liable, and the contractor wasn't gonna give you anything. So, that's about how that shook out. But, if they'd been a really conscientious contractor, they might've said, hey, here's some money for some rock, if nothing else.
I mean, it was spread around the league, possibly, yeah.
Yeah, and bring some in, yeah.
And we hauled some rock in that year, and bladed it multiple times to try and bring the road back to what it was before. But, I mean, it's, it's never been a, a high-quality road.
But it's never washed out, so to speak. Those holes are in there for, like, potholes from traffic, wouldn't you say?
Right, I mean, it's, it's the inside corners where, where traffic cuts the corner on both sides.
And back on the way toward the house. That part, on the south side of that road, that's the oldest part of the farm, that's where the water always sits. And you're not gonna be able to dig and ditch and drain that, yeah, either.
If it wasn't for the old railroad, um, now the trail, I mean, basically it holds everything.
From Braggie to the first mile corner, and make it a road, that'd be perfect. It would, it would, you could put that wire...
If it were for John and, and his pit being on that stretch of road, I'd vacate south of Joe's house. We don't need it. But, I mean, I, I talked to Adam last week, he stopped in. Obviously, Adam needs it to be able to haul feed back and...
We use it all the time.
Yeah.
There's only two people that have much business on the road, is Warren and us. Otherwise, it's, everybody's at their own free will. But it does get used a lot, there's a lot of...
Recreation on it.
Recreation, I don't know, recreation, it just...
Well, I'm thinking there's an aluminum factory out there, the way it looks to me, because somebody could make a lot of money if they went out and drove along there and picking up aluminum cans. But, I don't know if Danny gets out that far.
I, I don't know what the tally is on it. We discussed that in my house.
Yep.
A year ago.
Yep, yeah, but originally, I was looking at, uh, a three, four-foot ditch like we've got by John's, but I don't think the road would hold up with that deep of a ditch, plus...
Yeah.
The rest of the river cutting in.
You're gonna be repairing the road all the time, right?
You see, like, like at John Warren's, that curve there, you dug, dumped tons of rock there. Because the ditch was cleaned out, so when the water comes up and it goes over the road, then that fall creates that current and pulls all that rock into the ditch.
Which is why over west, where we're talking, we were only talking about digging basically a one-foot-deep swale. And cutting the curve off on each side of the road, so that the road isn't the lowest spot through that section. From the elevator down to John Warren's pit.
I got a question, Ben.
Sure.
Okay, this process of digging, I'm, I'm not gonna call it a ditch, a swale, I'm excited, because it's really not a ditch. Approximately what's that gonna cost? Do you have any idea? And my thoughts are, if you took that money and put it into rock on the road, which would be more beneficial?
The rock.
I think, I, there's other projects in this county you, you need to spend money on, other than that stupid little stretch of road.
Honestly, I agree with Steve. I, I really think just leave it alone.
Just don't send the calls in the spring.
All we, all we call for is to have a maintainer grade the road once in a while. It's been two months since that maintainer's been on that road, and it's ruffled. I mean, it, we're, I pay taxes too, maybe it ain't like a lot of people, but I feel I ain't getting no compensation for what I do do.
The reason why they call it, because there's brack, and there was a frostbowl there right by Adam.
And the reason that there's frostbowl is because there's no ditch for the water to drain away from the road.
If you dig the ditch, I...
I mean, that's what creates frostbowl.
I don't want a cesspool there all year round. You better make it so drained somewhere, down there. If you drove by, where are you gonna drain it to?
Yeah, that's fine.
How does it drain now, Steve?
What's that?
How, how does it drain now?
It just seeps in the ground.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying. It will continue to seep into the ground, but the road...
It'll drain down.
You know, then we'll split the swale, we'll run off the road into that swale, and then it'll seep in, so we'll get off the road a few days earlier, at least. That, that's my thoughts, anyway.
But as far as cost, uh, between the, the operator and the machine we're looking at... Ninety to a hundred bucks an hour would be my guess for time out there. Timeframe, since we can cast the material out in the field, you're looking at just a guy, you're not looking at another guy in a truck to haul it away. Uh, I'd have to ask Kevin, how many hours does it take him to clean for that direction?
What if we did just like on one side? I mean, I know, if you're talking something like that, if you just did one side part of the way up and see, I mean, you don't have to do the whole, both sides, both... You know what I'm saying? Just see if it helps a little? I don't know.
It, it's a possibility. I mean, right now, I've got tree shops off the line with the same piece of equipment to be able to dig, ditch, and cast out in the field. So, if they don't want it, that's fine, why do it? Let's go, let's go to a different place where people are begging us to come and clean ditch.
All right.
Run the maintainer once in a while.
Rick Williams up a good point. I mean, there, there is a cost savings if you don't do it, whatever project it is, if you just elect not to do it, you're gonna save whatever money. And I do believe that you could step up, it is a bad area. But, I will say, stepped up maintenance, and there's no excuse for the maintainer not maintaining it, and they're right now fairly decent condition.
You're not saying that they don't grade the road, it's just that when we had a year like last year, with excessive rain and everything, and the frostbowl and stuff, it just needed a little more attention in those particular areas than normal.
Some of the other roads.
Yep.
And I realize it takes a lot of time to drive from Humboldt, there down to Braggie, to get there.
But, and I, you know, it's just a rough situation, we've been through it. And I'm siding with Ben, it's never much fun to get a call from Adam, when he's in one of his moles, or moods.
And it's the washboard.
I completely agree, you know...
Like now, it's the washboard, he, he can't...
I think that could be pretty easily remedied.
Well, that's all we asked.
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't, we don't want a superhighway, just maintain what's there.
Well, and, and the unfortunate thing is, is by Stephen's place, a new hog facility was developed out that direction, so they have a lot more traffic on that road than they had, even two, three years ago. Uh, you know, I mean...
That's very true.
Under, under good conditions, our, our maintainer can hit all of his routes in six to seven days. Uh, the spring that we had this year with all of the frostboils, and only being able to be on them for a couple hours before you had to pull off, because you were doing more damage than good, uh, the result was, you could hit all of your routes about every three weeks. When you, you know, ideally, with the conditions as poor as they were, you'd like to be able to hit them every three days. Knock on wood, hopefully, next year, we don't have the frostboils that we have, although the moisture that we've had...
We got the same issue going into this one, as we did last year.
I mean, the harvest was very similar this year to what it was last year, I'm afraid that the spring's gonna be very similar to what we had this year as well. How about we throw a little rock on it, get grader on it, smooth it out, put a side on it, close to through traffic? We can look at doing that this spring, I really don't wanna haul rock right now.
Might slow down some of the regional traffic.
They, they, they look for those roads.
Yeah, 'cause then you gotta go find out why they're finding it.
They look for those roads.
They go around the side right into the hay.
Yeah, but that just invites them, that just invites them, but that's true.
They just literally have to, they block it off, so nobody can do it.
I think there's plenty of rock, it just needs to...
I think, I think it'll get out.
Well, but, I mean, we, we need to be able to build crown in the road, which is definitely done by cutting shoulders.
And that makes them ask.
We can't cut shoulders.
Cause there's, yeah, if you just cut it deep.
There's no ditch. Like I said, I've got three guys that are all clamoring for the link belt, and so...
And you've mentioned it, Sandy did, and Steve mentioned, but, you know, if there's a ditch or swale or anything at this point in time, but there is still a right-of-way that extends out past the road, and you guys agreed to not farm in the right-of-way.
I tried to, but I don't usually run the tilly stuff.
Keep those tilly guys out of there.
I don't have to get any closer, or I mean, get, stay out.
Well, why don't we shoot for, just trying to put an extra shot of maintenance on that road for now? And see how we get along until next year.
Before we get there. I just didn't want to spend a lot of money.
If we knew for sure that we could do something, and it was an absolute guarantee, fix, I think we all would be, but this is a...
It's just a, a location of it.
It's a bit of an experiment, trying to accomplish something positive, but we don't know.
I agree with you, I...
On those curves, if you wanna take out a little, like, one ditch, you'll need to get the water out. The water run, that's fine, but I wouldn't do the whole road. You're gonna have, it'd be like down by the Murray Bridge, where you dig that up.
Yep.
I, I think Dave shot it, yeah?
This way, when the water goes receipts, the road's there, you can go on about some distance.
Well, it works, that way he can give it to the machine to somebody else.
Yeah, but, but if I guarantee one thing, there is highly constructive areas that need to be addressed.
Maybe we'll have to, end of the year.
What if we did a load embargo on it?
I, I think that just hurts them, I mean, they're the primary user on, on their road.
I like that, that's a thought, and a lot of traffic over on that road.
Now, you don't haul...
We don't haul grain on that.
It was that, it, that was an unfortunate situation, too, we never liked that quarry thing, whatever contractor, but you know, what do you do?
I always figured you'd get compensated some for the use of that road.
Yeah, I had multiple conversations with Pocahontas County, I'm not...
That was, that was a horrible amount of truck traffic.
That was a lot, I saw it. Bruce and I were down there, we saw it.
We finally got on and made them go east around up the hill.
That was better.
When they first started digging in the pit down there, my dad made them, would not agree to it until, if they went the other way around. Said they didn't wanna go up the hill. And they did for a long time, until, of course, my dad's gone now.
Well, next, next time we have something going out there to put a bar going around.
Well, and with that project, we didn't know anything about it.
No, they were in there and setting up and hauling trucks before, nobody told anybody.
I mean, it, it wasn't till Adam had called me and, and told me that they were tearing the hell out of the road, that we even knew anything was going on over there. It's not like they checked with us first.
No. And if you guys, if we leave it alone for now, but if it comes back and you want it dug out, that dirt is not going over, where do you, where do you plan on doing that dirt?
Over in the field.
For the field?
When I talked to Adam, he said just cast it in the field.
Okay, okay. That's fine.
When he was scolded me, that's what his main concern was. He didn't have your dirt, it, it, your crops off, we, the only reason they do it.
Pile it up somewhere, we're trying to, cause he's sure the bridge got a lot.
Right.
Perfect.
That works. Hopefully, it dries up, not real dry, but just a little bit dry.
Dry enough, just dry enough.
I know.
So, that works for us.
Can we just leave it for a year and see what happens?
Yeah, let's leave it and try to get just a little extra maintenance on that road, maybe make an extra trip, if you have to make an extra trip out that way.
That's the mold of rock.
Yeah.
A tile underneath Adam's road there by his house, then?
By Adam's house?
I know, the survey guy's about there, so...
Well, that's for those, uh...
That's for that, uh, ag drainage well closure.
Yeah.
I've got an agreement for Dave to sign, uh, that Adam dropped off last Friday on it.
While you're here, do a FYI on that. But it probably won't be this fall, Steve, because of the, that ag, well, they'll get the tile in, that's what I was told, but, with that little ditch is... That, with the contractor, and they get all the permits, I mean, it probably won't get done till next spring, unless it stays nice till New Year's. And then, they have, Adam says you can dump the dirt, he'll take the dirt, so they don't have, they don't have to haul all the way, no one has to haul it. But, I just think the tile's gonna get put in, and that might be it, so it didn't involve that road crossing, is that what you got the, coming on?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, uh, it's just an agreement for, uh, for tile crossings, I got it.
Mm, yeah. This week.
Snowing, the snow.
Of course, next week it starts getting a little cooler.
A lot of stuff might get done if it stays dry, and I have any...
Well, I mean, that's, that's part of what we were looking at, like I said, we were looking at an eighteen-inch mark of the road. And, uh, a ditch that would run the water back north to town, where they've already got a ditch that runs over the river.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Sandy.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, no other concerns, move on. Public hearing, county budget amendment for nineteen and twenty.
All in need to open the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion on the budget amendment.
Yes, you do. The reason for the budget amendment was to include, uh, just all secondary road, to include two motor patrols, roadstone, crack filling, and drought scouts. And then, capital project was amended to include construction carryover projects. And if you have any detailed questions, many can.
I already asked him the detailed questions, and I think he told all of us a while back, because this was a technicality of the hearing date, nothing new.
No, uh, this is the same paperwork that I had a month ago.
No additional spending, so it was just pushed forward to make the date.
Yeah, it's just, uh, items that we had already obligated, as far as the motor patrols that were supposed to be delivered in May, that came in September. Um, the, the forming pickup that because of the GM strike got pushed back, and I think that's supposed to be here next month. Um, construction projects that we had contracts awarded for in last fiscal year, but contractor didn't come in, and so, after the first of July. Roadstone, uh, I, I bumped up the numbers for the roadstone carryover, it was, uh, money that we did not expend out of the road, out of the rock budget last year, as well as the FEMA reimbursement that we got this year for rocking the roads. Uh, majority of our rock hauling was done after July first, which is out of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, or whatever it is that I have for rock. Uh, I think we're over three hundred right now, uh, which means we wouldn't haul a lot of rock in the spring or possible stockpiles this year.
Which also means you haul a lot of rock.
This year.
This year.
We haul a lot of rock.
But it took a lot of rock.
There's a lot of places that needed it. There's a lot of spot rock in on, uh, frostboils, and it, it needed it, and you know, for the most part, it, it really healed things up. Until it got addressed, if, if, if those areas where it took some extra rock, and it took some extra maintenance, it really, the roads really did get much improved over the summer. And, and, uh, the FEMA reimbursement or the declaration is, I mean, it, it really helped us out, I mean, they reimbursed us a hundred thousand for, for rock.
Yep, that was good. That's, nothing, yeah, that was just all old news, 'cause nothing new. So, public comment.
I'd make a motion to close it, if that's all the comments.
I'd second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighteen, a resolution adopting a budget amendment.
I'd make a motion to adopt that resolution as Dave stated.
I would second that as well.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carried.
There you go.
Okay. Ben's up, approve Humboldt County twenty twenty IDOT secondary road budget amendment.
So, this is what we were just talking about, um, as far as, we've got an itemized list, where we're just leaving out our numbers on our current budget. Bridges and culverts, we've spent quite of their money this year, uh, with drought scouts in, um, as well as county crews resetting a lot of cross pipes. That all comes out of the same, same budget. As well as putting money aside for what I figure is the eventual hefty tile crossing. I haven't heard anything from him in a month or so.
Well, I talked to him, he asked me where I take the paperwork, and I said to you.
Okay.
I said, get it to you, so you got the numbers for the crossing.
Yes, and I, I haven't seen anything. I know he was working with contractor over by Manson. Uh, the guy's name's drawn, I'm drawing a blank on right now. But, uh, he was supposed to be shooting us a quote, and I've got Scott Patterson giving me a quote as well. Other than that, like I said, it's roadstone reimbursement, uh, pulling in some money for crack filling and slurry leveling that we had obligated with, uh, four-dive asphalt. New equipment and construction carryover.
You got that all on one page?
It's all on his option.
I'm right here. I know, I just looked, I'm looking at the rest of it.
I'll make a motion to approve Humboldt County fiscal year twenty twenty IDOT secondary road budget, Ben, number one.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carried.
So, I was gonna ask a quick one, on that crack filling and slurry, is that the stuff that we pushed forward to this year, or this, next year, but it was from...
This was, uh, uh, slurry leveling quote that we had with four-dive asphalt for, for twenty, twenty-five miles, something like that, a slurry leveling. And it was more than what we had in the budget.
More for the budget, we...
For, for maintenance repairs.
All right, I was trying to remember how that went.
And that still leaves a, a bit of additional money in that account, if we have to do pavement patching, which like west of Bode, we've got a twenty-foot patch now. That's, uh, we'll need to dig out and, and repair from where we did that squash pipe here last month. The Oxon Blacktop, or Oxon South has two locations that I should have Blacktop Service look at, putting an additional lift on, cause it's rough riding over them. Box culverts from a decade ago that just continue to settle on us.
Right. Did you, have you noticed over here by Chantlins, that, the way the edge is breaking off that road, that we just did?
Here in town?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, uh, we've got a lot of, uh, heavy equipment with...
Heavy stuff on...
Outside tire right on the edge is, is starting, is starting to ravel. I mean, u- usually pavement always rolls, but it is starting to show, uh, some cracking and separation on the outside.
Well, I just turned down that the other day, and I noticed the edge there up on that corner, and I still can't believe that guy wire comes out towards that corner, cause it's...
It, and it's dangling out there.
It's a mess trying to get around it, and everybody has to pull right up to the line, you know, to make sure that you're gonna turn, and... But, can't believe somebody doesn't hook that with a field, a piece of equipment, or...
I know our, uh, uh, mower operator, Brandon, our new guy, I know he caught it, he's like, hey, he goes, it was already hanging, he goes, but I bumped it with the mower, he goes, it's still in the ground, it's still hanging.
Yeah, well...
And we called him, I let him know.
Right. I just saw how that was breaking, crumbling, I thought, I'd say something to you, so...
That's a down guy for the cable, isn't it? Fiber optics?
Uh, the, the one that's, that's out there right now, it's, it's pole guy wire.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's backing up from the fiber optic.
I don't know.
Yeah, American, so if it goes clear to top of the pole, that's mid-American.
Okay.
If it's down by the cable, that's cable companies.
Okay.
That's probably what mid-American is. How lucky at all, I drive it by now. Now, I, I didn't know that.
I didn't either.
The top ones are mid-Americans, that's the power companies, if they're down underneath where the fiber optics run, that's the fiber optics.
Hmm.
Down guy back up.
I'll be darned. Now we learned something, Dave, thanks.
Well, you can take nine more drilling cars, learn something here this morning.
Yeah, that's so the pole don't go like this, with the...
Doesn't U-shape.
Yeah.
No.
So, they gotta have their own down guy on it.
I'll be darned.
We gotta find out who owns the fiber on that.
McLeod.
McLeod's got it.
I'm pretty sure it's McLeod that runs.
They're over and passed over by the...
The guy that bumps that and rips that fiber optic down, probably, it's gonna be more spending than the power.
Yeah. Don't wanna match with fiber, no.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve application work in county right-of-way for D and N drainage. This is for Father Hart's Farm, I spoke to you guys last week about it, where, uh, Marso and them were trying to do some work. Originally, they looked at what they thought was an eight-inch tile that ran underneath the road... Originally they looked at what they thought was an eight inch tile that ran underneath the road and they needed to upgrade that to a twelve inch. After I spoke to you guys, he called four or five hours later and said, "Hey, we found the twelve inch. Well, we have to dig in the right of way a little bit."
So you didn't have to tear up the road.
So they don't have to tear up the road, but they still have to, they still have to work in the right of way to look into it.
Okay.
Um, so basically, yeah, I don't know if I did or not, but I, it's, it's good.
Yeah.
It's good. I'll make a motion to approve the application work in County right of way for D and N drainage.
I would second that.
Any other discussion?
And all the paperwork was in order from the other day then.
Yeah.
So...
We've got their insurance on five oh one.
Good.
All favorite?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
And especially when we have good working days, when, if we can keep those guys going and you send out a text or an email, that works for us to...
Well, it's even better 'cause they found what they're looking for.
Yeah.
So they, all they need to do is hook up to it. That, that's great. No digging across the road.
Right, exactly.
Don't have settling issues for ten years.
And it's nice to, like Bruce said, with the weather decent and you never know how long, it's nice to not hold them back. It'd be nice if they... Always emphasize getting up any permitting previous to the job, but...
Well, sometimes I don't look at my phone, but sometimes when I'm sitting at the elevator waiting, I look through and then I see your text now, "Oh, I better reply to this before I forget to do it," so...
Thank you for always doing that.
Yeah.
It is, helps everybody. The good thing is they're making you aware of it.
Right.
Rather than, just doing it and then, and then you're aware of it, right.
And then depending for the good afterwards.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just fine.
Okay, both?
The third item that I've got on the agenda is to discuss act on Brentville driveway. This was a driveway permit between, uh, Brent and Bruce north of their hog setup on Pione Avenue.
It's actually not their hog setup, but...
Er, Brad's. I'm sorry, Brad's.
Yeah.
Uh, it was a permit to install a new driveway and remove a driveway. We installed the driveway and from what I understand, the machine got moved back out there to remove the driveway and they called and changed their mind. They said they don't want the driveway removed. Sue talked to them, said, "Well, we gave you two hundred dollar credit." Bruce showed up the next day, put, you know, road check for two hundred bucks to leave the driveway, but it doesn't follow the number of driveways that we have as far as our ordinance. So basically, we would have to deny it and then the board would have to approve it to leave it the way that it is.
FYI, if you look at this picture, I went out and looked at this. Yeah, like it's kinda dark, but at least it shows you where it is. It's right here. Right at the end of the second. This is the highest point for all around. Everything's full of oil. It's really not a driveway. It's, I think it's probably intersection, so it slopes into the field and it's exactly the same on the north side of the road. It slopes into the field. You can't drive anything of any consequence in there. If it's dry, maybe a pickup, but they don't pull loads. They don't put equipment in. I mean, it's just... And I said, as Bruce said earlier, I'm not an engineer either. When you look at that, it appears they constructed that key intersection in that manner.
It's just been filled in over the years.
However, my...
Just colored pictures there.
So I guess the reason that I put, put this on the agenda is for you guys to, uh...
That's a corner, yeah.
Yeah, it is a corner.
Approve it because we can't, uh, and then subsequently come back and look at our driveway policy. Dave's tired of being the bad guy having to reject these for, for things like this, only to have to bring it to the board and then...
Creates a lot of extra work.
Right. Because it, it's, it's turned into an additional trip for him to go out and look at it, for Eric to go over and look at it, I mean...
Yeah. I think we do need to revisit our driveway policy, especially the springs or the falls we've been having.
I mean, I don't mind the, the limitation of a fifty foot top, uh, and then people coming in subsequently and asking for something larger than that because I think fifty is plenty wide. It's wider than our gravel roads. If you can turn from one gravel road to another gravel road, you should be able to make a driveway. Uh, and the guys that, uh, want to be able to stage where they park their semis sideways, I mean, if they ask for that, we can bring that in.
You're talking about just wider, in that case, wider than fifty?
Then they're asking for wider than fifty foot. I think we need to look at our policy where it says how many driveways they can have per quarter section or whatever it is and possibly just eliminate that one, which... Because we've never turned one away for having more.
I was gonna say, at what point do you, you ever made one?
No.
I do like getting rid of the old little ones.
Also do I, you know, and we try to, we try to incentivize. By giving that credit. Property owners by giving them credits. And for the most part, the ones that they don't use, they happily remove this for whatever reason. I don't know if the two brothers didn't talk while they were standing there at the counter.
They didn't.
You know, I mean...
And I explained to Bruce, 'cause he was actually with me when we looked at this, and he wasn't objectionable if it had been an old driveway, but it just doesn't make, yeah, it really doesn't, speaking of...
I mean, they might, there's, there's tracks in and out.
Yeah, I mean, you could drive an empty, you know, vehicle or whatever, but, you know, they don't, it isn't in a spot or where they pull their loads out of. That's obviously why they put the driveway in.
Right, but I mean, for somebody like me that, that works a farmer's, it's great to be able to start in that corner.
Sure, you could drive, yeah. But when you, like I said, you look at the fact that the north side is exactly like the south side. It's like that, and who knows if they filmed that, if, you know, if they built it that way or whatever, but I agree with what, I mean, you're, you're never gonna get a policy spot on.
No.
I think you're always gonna have to maybe look at these, you know, the encouragement is getting rid of the old driveways. Because if you just don't even have any policy, then they may never even look at the old driveway and they, no one wants it.
Right.
And it doesn't ever get removed. Usually people are looking at that. You know, it's not gonna hurt Dave to maybe go out and look at this. He should know what's going on by now. He's looked at enough driveways.
No, the, 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 the point of it is he's tired of being the bad guy that has to reject it.
Yeah, he has to afford to be bad guy.
Only bring it in here and have it over, overruled.
Yeah.
And then they look back at him and say, "Well, that was a waste."
But you know, Ben, it's kinda like you mentioned on, uh, the fifty foot is be the standard right now.
Right.
You go up to fifty foot, as it's written. It's the same way as, uh, eh, you know, it's always good to have that discussion if, if something wants to be changed versus the policy picture.
I think that with the pictures you and I were getting from farmer, farmer that's sitting behind, people loading on the road, if they have that ability to have an area where they can pull in, load and not block traffic.
The funny thing is, is a lot of those guys that have the long driveways were still loading on the road.
I was gonna say, they're still loading on the road.
There's, I mean, they were the ones that were still sitting there with the semi on the road. It just made it so that they could easily pull their green card into that long driveway and load the semi.
Well, no matter what, you're gonna get the cheating.
And when you, you get falls like we have, it happens.
Yep. It's been a while since I remember where the drive falls.
Yeah, this was awful. But I think it's, there again, my take is it, policies are policies. You're never gonna get it exacting. I mean, it, it is...
But it's always good to look at your policies and recheck.
You can look at them.
I mean, I, I don't think that hurts.
No.
If it's something that we can tweak it a little bit to make it not quite so cumbersome, I think that's a good way to do it.
Dave's supposed to be up here next week for, uh, potential road vacation, so maybe I'll just put it on the agenda to review the policy next week while he's here. Or, 'cause he's the one that deals with it. I, I don't...
That's a good idea.
Okay.
But as far as this one, get, cash a check.
Yep.
So a motion to...
I would make a motion to, if you have a check on hand.
We do have a check on hand.
Cash it and leave it as is.
I'd second.
You wanted me to put in the motion to cash the check?
No, no.
I'm sorry. That would do, do, uh, leave, leave the additional driveway.
Leave the driveway intact, if we wanna call it a driveway. So we all knew what we were talking about when we said cash a check.
Okay, got a motion of a second. Any discussion?
All favorite?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
As long as Kent doesn't leave the article, have the headlines of the article in paper, first, "Cash the check."
What the heck is going on in the engineer's office?
That's all I was getting.
Start, start getting money under the cable. Now, they would really be in trouble.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Everything, I'm sorry, I, I thought I... Thank you.
Thanks, Ben, though, for chewing through all this stuff.
And then the last one, I guess we've already discussed and acted on, not officially, but unofficially through complaints, is basically, uh, uh, discuss and act on ditch dipping for a hundred and eighty street near Bradgate. I suppose this is an item that's...
Yeah, it better make some, act on it. Yeah, I suppose you better.
It's discussion.
It doesn't say we have to act.
There's really nothing.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we discussed it.
You can, but you don't have to.
You know, last table of years, back to it was two...
We're all here for the discussion.
Get it looking right here now, Drew's moving a little bit.
Ben, this is just, uh, brainstorming, which is very rare one for me, but I'm sitting here and I hear them say, "Well, we haven't had it bladed for however long it's been." Is there any, do we have paperwork that says these guys have been down this road? Do they fill, or they just...
So I've got, uh...
How does that work?
I've got a couple of my operators now that list their roads that they hit, uh, every day on their time sheet. I've got two of them that are, that I instructed to do it because of complaints in their area, uh, that they never see a patrol all year long.
Well, that's the one.
I don't have, uh, this route as none of them. I think he logs it in, in a notebook in his control, at least he did, he did years ago. That's how he used to keep track of where he went. I can check and see if he's still doing it that way. Uh, we don't have a policy as far as these guys writing down the roads that they played on a day-to-day basis, but we can...
I just think that it would, for us, it would be so much easier. I mean, I know that the easiest way would be to, if you had tracking it.
The easiest way is an expensive way.
Yeah, it's gonna cost you.
GPS on every piece of...
Costs you a trillion dollars, but I think that if we just did a little paperwork and...
The date they were on the road and...
Right.
Went back and said, "Hey, uh, I was out there last Thursday and it was bladed." Was it last Thursday? Well, that's what my sheet says.
Yeah.
So...
It would be hard to make something like that.
I don't think...
You could actually even do it in your phone.
Well, so what, so what my guys have been doing is basically they've got their time sheet on the front and then they flip over their time sheet and they've got Monday through Friday and every day they write the individual roads that they've bladed. So like Georgia Avenue between a hundredth and a hundred and fiftieth and then a hundred and fiftieth between Georgia and Arizona or whatever. I mean, that's...
Especially these roads that we know we have some issues with when you drive it down.
I think that would save a lot of chewing the fat.
Yeah.
In my opinion, but I don't wanna be the one that says, "Hey."
Thank you.
But mandate it. We're trying to, we're just trying to keep us all from, if we can.
Yeah, no, uh, I can say something at the next forum meeting, basically tell the guys that blade operators are gonna start listening to the routes they did with on a day-to-day basis.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'm keeping a DM full of sighs on this today.
Okay, anything else, Ben, clean up after me last week?
Uh, for you, I've got a signature required for an agreement, uh, for easement for installation of front drainage tile. This is, uh, for Lubin Falls, private ag drainage well closure.
Up there off of Wagner?
Yeah, um, the, the old Lannis Farm, I can't... If, if that needs to be done formally, Peggy, I can put it on.
Your sign.
That's okay. That's what hands are for, right?
Otherwise, I, I was just trying to get it done so the contractor moved it so he...
Yeah, we probably should.
So he can be done.
Cause it's worth it in the right of way, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That, that's all I've got. We've got, uh, eight or ten locations, a snow fence put up in Humboldt's area. Um, Bode and Hardy are supposed to be doing theirs this week. Humboldt's still got half dozen locations that they couldn't get into that I know of, uh, either because the ground doesn't work or the crop is still in. It looks like we got good weather until Wednesday at some point, so hopefully the crop gets out between now and Wednesday and then possibly Thursday, we can get in those fields.
That's good. I just, I sent that text out the other day just 'cause I spotted some fence over there and I thought that was nice to see. Last year we were up against the fence and didn't get any put in, so it's nice to see it out, so, so thank you.
Lucky the snow didn't stick around and back the pole.
Exactly.
If you put it up and you never need it, that's really cheap insurance. That'd be awesome.
Yeah, exactly.
Buy a new snow blower or something.
Beyond that, we got, uh, ditch cleaning that we're doing. We've got agreements with property owners where we're casting it out in the field. Everybody is, right now, everybody isn't wanting to do that, but we've only got one machine capable of doing it, so they're all fighting for the same piece of equipment. Finishing up driveways, cross pipe resets, I mean, doing whatever we can, routine maintenance on equipment to keep the guys moving, so... Mounting back slopes, um, and, and pulling, uh, crumb rolls in before winter hits, so...
If I were, I'm guessing it's just an FYI?
Yeah, I know Dave said he sent one out for, uh, debris.
That's good. Hopefully, I like the way it's worded. If you just take care of it, no problem. With just a notification and hopefully it will.
And a lot of times what that does is that creates a lightning strike, so...
As far as?
A fire. It, it, a fire. They burn their brush pile up.
And clean it up. Can you get it out?
Until it comes back, yeah, until the next pile, so...
Then you say, "No," maybe they get it the first time. Some do, some don't.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for me?
Nope. Uh, this may concern a road and I'll have to get you a little more detailed information. I'm not gonna take up meeting time here, but, uh, I got a call from a contractor. He was not set out to, he was, he was entitled for a guy and he's found a whole bunch of stuff that's really confusing to him and it may involve, uh, drainage district tile going underneath the road over towards Gilmore, uh, to show you. I don't wanna take up a lot of time, but I don't know if you're gonna be around here.
I'll just stick around till after the...
I can check, best show trash too, because it, it's just one of those things you get into, nobody knew about it, till you start digging in the ground, you find tile. And so he made me talk to you anyway. I just wanted to give you some information on it, 'cause you got hopefully fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Out there south of Gilmore?
Barely.
Just, Trish had one, just wondering if, uh, they're gonna be doing some tile work that'll affect some of the, you know, people over on that one drainage area.
I don't think so. No, it's just an unfortunate deal that was hoping to just put a little bit of tile for this guy and then found out that there's a lot of, could be potential a lot of issues that he, nobody was aware of.
I mean, the, the way we've been treating things right now is because we're so far late in the season, if there is a road crossing, uh, we still require the, the concrete underneath the roadway, but we're requiring the contractor to backfill it with rock.
And I don't think it's gonna...
And I don't believe it's ours, not ours.
I don't believe it's gonna come to that.
It's late.
But I don't think it's gonna come to a road crossing. In fact, I almost know it's not.
Work in the right of way.
If that, it's just, I just wanna show you the location and tell you what, I know as of right now.
Okay.
Give you heads up.
Okay. Moving on.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Second chair canvas for city school election result.
I make a motion to recess out of the board of supervisors and convey as the board can...
of canvassers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Canvas to vote.
The purpose of this second tier canvas is for those cities and those schools that are shared between counties, um, to compile the votes with the new change in the city school election rules, instead of having people, um, that are on the pokey side come over to Gilmore and vote, everything cut off at the county line, so involved in Gilmore City, we had results, Pocahontas had results, first time, usually it's all results here and that's it. Um, same thing went with the Gilmore City Bradgate School District, the Humboldt School District, and Twin Rivers School District, because they all had some areas of some other counties in there.
And basically where the school decided is where the vote was held, so...
Yep, mhm.
So, when we do this, this will officially be the last canvas, canvas of the candidates?
I don't know.
But do I have to do through yours again?
I'm so tired of seeing numbers, huh?
Do we have to do through yours again?
No.
No.
Yours is done.
They're done.
They're done, okay.
Yep, they do not have to have a recount, or runoff. So what I'm gonna hand you is abstracts, cause you're not reading the votes from tally books, you're reading straight off of the canvas, and I'm comparing it to what I put in for numbers here to make sure I've got my numbers right. So this one is Gilmore City, so with Gilmore City, you've got one set that's Humboldt, one set that's Pocahontas, and one set that's Wright, or Webster. With, uh, this set, which is the city of Gilmore City, I want those to be there. You've got the Humboldt one, and you've got Pocahontas. But this set is the Humboldt Community School District, and this has got just Humboldt and Webster and Wright. And then the last one, at least it's, you know, smaller, Twin Rivers has just Humboldt and Cassous. So, there'll be four, or abstract story, or four sets of abstract story.
You're supposed to hand these out, or...
I can give them to Dave if you want, and he can give to you.
No, I've, I've just...
Take one of them.
Okay, do I have everything I need if I hang on to this one?
Yep, just grab a packet.
Aye.
So just like when we canvassed before, you have to tell me which one you have, do you have Gilmore City, do you have the school, which school do you have, Gilmore, Humboldt, or Twin Rivers?
Do I have everything?
And it'll tell at the top.
I know what it is, it's Twin Rivers.
Everything there, okay. So you're gonna read me the first one.
So, telling you that it's the former school district at large?
Yes.
And then I'm supposed to tell you the votes received for each person?
Right.
Okay, uh, Christine Botany received one hundred and fifteen votes. Megan Phillips received one hundred and thirteen votes. Scattering received five votes. Jill Dahl received ten votes. Courtney Sampson received four votes. Gilcom, one vote. Saturn, one vote. Christie, one vote. Eric Mobler received two votes. Melissa Basky, two votes. Richard Basky, three votes. Brandon Jensen, two votes. Greg Lunkie, one vote. And Erin Crand, one vote.
Yeah, right.
It might be the first time that you've got a whole...
Yep. Is there anything here that I need to...
Yes, same thing on the Cassous.
Cassous County, former at large, uh, district director, uh, from Cassous County, Christine Botany received zero votes. Megan Phillips, zero. Scattering, zero. That's all around these pages.
Okay.
And I have a question for you, should I sign this?
No.
No?
You weren't here.
Okay, it's perfect, that answers my question, I will not.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, which one do you have?
I have school, Humboldt School Director to fill vacancy at District One.
Okay.
Tate Saturn received one thousand four hundred and eighty-six. Scattering received three. Pete Saddle received one. Uh, Janelle Smith, five. Heather McKinney, two. Barry Ellis, one. Mike Opain, one. Lynette Stone, one. Tyler Smith, one. Tonye Christensen, one. And Chad Theseville, one. Okay, now we go to Humboldt School District Two. Kyle Klunder, five hundred and eighty-four. Christie Clark, one thousand fifty-eight. Scattering was zero. Barry Ellis, one. Mike Opain, one. Humboldt School Director, District Four. Brody Clark, four hundred and twenty-five. Kathy Gilcom, one thousand one hundred and ninety-four. Scattering was one vote. Dean Protas, one vote. Okay, now this abstract for Webster County. District One to fill vacancy for Humboldt. Uh, Tate Saturn, one vote. Scattering of zero. District Two, Christie Clark, one vote. Kyle Klunder, two votes. Scattering of zero. District Four, Brody Clark, two votes. Kathy Gilcom, one. Scattering of zero. Now we move on to Wright County. District One, Tate Saturn, two votes. Scattering of zero. District Two, Kyle Klunder, received zero. Christie Clark, two. Scattering of zero. District Four, Brody Clark, zero. Kathy Gilcom, two. Scattering of zero. That is it.
Alright, I had the city of Gilmore City Mayor. Uh, Lowell Johnson received twenty-eight. Scattering, zero. City of Gilmore City, City at Large, Brittany Dickey, twenty-six. Denny Frederickson, twenty-five. Paul Hyfer, twenty-seven. Scattering, zero. City of Gilmore City, City Council to fill vacancy at Large, Mike Peterson, twenty-seven. Scattering, zero. City of Gilmore, let me make sure I didn't go to, Gilmore City Public Measure KM, yes, twenty-six. No, two. Alright, Gilmore City, this is Pocahontas. Lowell Johnson, twenty-one. Scattering, zero. Gilmore City Council at, member at large, Pocahontas, Brittany Dickey, twenty. Denny Frederickson, twenty-one. Paul Hyfer, twenty. That's it.
Is there a scattering?
Scattering, zero, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Gilmore City Council Member at Large to fill vacancy, Pocahontas, Mike Peterson, twenty-one. Scattering, zero. I think that's, I guess there's more. Um, Pocahontas for the question... Public measure? There were twenty, but it... It doesn't say yes or no, it just says there were twenty votes.
Yeah, twenty votes against the question, there were one.
So twenty-four?
Yep.
And one against?
For the, for the, yeah, oh, okay.
For the question, alright, I wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
Yeah, that is kind of a different way of doing it.
The wording is, yeah.
Twenty, yes, twenty, or one, no. That was a, that's a lot.
Alright, I have Humboldt County, Iowa, Gilmore City Bradgate School District at Large, scattering, zero.
Tracy Dickey, wait a minute, oh, I'm sorry, you were on, oh, at large?
Um, Gilmore City Bradgate.
Director at large?
Director at large.
Okay.
Yep. Scattering, zero. Uh, Tracy Dickey, nine. Toni Hoover, nine. Levon Hoover, one, yeah, one. Mitch Nielsen, one. Susan Wallace, one. Then we have Gilmore City Bradgate School, Public Measure KO, yes, twenty-seven, no, twelve. Then we have Pocahontas, Gilmore City Bradgate Director at Large, Tracy Dickey, eleven. Toni Hoover, twelve. Scattering, one. Uh, Public Measure, uh, for Pocahontas County, Gilmore City, okay, for the question, yes, nineteen, against, five. We have Gilmore City Bradgate Director at Large, this is Webster County. Scattering was zero. For the question, uh, zero, and against it, zero. That's all I have.
Okay.
What about Dave?
He's the chairman, he's the best.
He's my guy, he's that thing. Wow!
He's special.
I had the biggest one last time.
You did, you had the, and that one was a bad draw.
So according to the results that were calculated today, the city of Gilmore City Mayor, Lowell Johnson, received forty-nine votes. Um, Council Member at Large in the city of Gilmore City, Brittany Dickey had forty-six votes, Denny Frederickson had forty-six, and Paul Kipper had forty-seven. City of Gilmore City Council Member at Large to fill vacancy, Mike Peterson, had forty-eight votes. City of Gilmore City Public Measure KM, yes votes, forty-six, no votes, three. Continue on here. The Gilmore City Bradgate School District, Tracy Dickey received twenty votes, Toni Hoover received twenty-one votes. At the Gilmore City Bradgate Community School District, Public Measure KO, yes, had forty-six votes, no, had seventeen. The Humboldt Community School District, Director of District One to fill vacancy, Tate Saturn had four, one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine votes. Community School District, Director of District Two, Kyle Klunder had five hundred and eighty-six votes, Christie Clark had one thousand and sixty-one. Humboldt Community School District, Director of District Four, Brody Clark had four hundred and twenty-seven votes, Kathy Gilcom had one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven votes. Twin Rivers Community School District, Director at Large, Christine Botany had a hundred and fifteen votes, Megan Phillips, a hundred and thirteen, and Jill Dahl, ten. That completes the result, alright.
So those are the official, official?
The official, official, yeah. Congratulations to everybody.
Yes, congratulations, baby, for having it.
Yeah.
You got a good job.
Yeah, so we get it in the paper before the next election.
That's for sure. That's the first thing I worked on over the weekend, was to get you the, the minutes, so you had numbers.
Oh, you do a lot of, for us and a lot of extra work.
Thank you for doing that.
We do appreciate it.
She was working the weekend, asking her time.
I know.
The extended election stuff.
You have lots of election stuff, people don't realize how much work you do.
Yeah, everybody assumes election's over and you're done, and you got all people working.
What was our turnout, I mean, roughly?
Oh, I didn't bring the sheet in with me, but it was pretty good.
Pretty good turnout, certainly.
But we had competition in cities, we had competition in schools.
Right.
Um, that brings people out, so...
It was even nice to see the smaller towns that had a lot of people on ballot, so...
Exactly, yeah, there was interest this time.
I think, uh, politics are more interesting these days.
One way to put it, yeah.
You might wanna check your tweet, you might have just been tweeted. Uh-huh.
Alright, we declare all the winners to winner.
Yep, I need a motion on that place, I'll make a motion to declare the winners.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, carry.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn as the Board of Pamersons and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I have a lot of things for you to sign, so don't disappear.
I got writer's craft from last night.
I am.
Mention Harlan, he was re-elected as mayor over at Mon Hall.
He was.
Running the state campaign over there.
Process over there.
Okay, okay.
Well, I just was...
He keeps it young, he says.
He does?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say that evidently I must have been, have arrived, because I've finally got stuff that doesn't say Harlan Hanson on it.
How about that?
To the guy that, oh yeah, it took me a year or two. I know I'm in the right place if I got Harlan's mail here, so... Oh, well.
Okay, moving on down, accept and place on file the Community and Family Resources and the Richmond Center Auditors Report.
Well, this was just brought up because of the fact that down at, uh, juvenile detention, we do this where all the counties get, that are involved, they get the, uh, copy of the audit, and when I mentioned that to the lady down at, um, Community and Family Resources, she says, you know, I think that would be a good practice that we should start, because that way we, all the counties that belong, when you get your copy, you at least know that, hey, the board accepted the, the audit, so Peggy had, um, a copy sent to her electronically, and I also brought it back, um, a couple of weeks ago, so everything is in order, and for having six million plus dollar building that, uh, we are finally using, um, I guess I would, we're pretty happy that the money that, that they, uh, still showed positive cash, so I guess I would make the recommendation that we accept the, the audit that was done two weeks ago and move forward.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, carry. Accept and place on file the post-election audit report for the city school elections.
We're required by the Secretary of State to have a post-election audit, we held ours last Thursday, um, ours was at the Humboldt West Vernon Precinct, the first rotation ballot, and the first office on the ballot, so the first rotation ballot was, um, out in the township, Laverne School District, so we pulled every ballot with Laverne School District on it, um, we had three people on the board, and Trish and I gave them the ballots, let them sort through them, we pull out just the ones that had the Laverne School District on it, they counted them, and came up with the exact same number as we had before.
It, this is just kinda like a little spot check type thing they do?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's to certify to people, let people know that our machines are working correctly, and they're coming right, and it's good, yeah.
Well, and having heard all that, good news, I would accept and place on file the post-election audit report for the city school election on November five, twenty nineteen.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, carry.
And the reason this was on the agenda is we are required to give you guys a copy of the file, so...
Okay, committee report. Okay, committee report.
Now, obviously, we had a meeting last, uh, Tuesday and after, uh, Supervisor's meeting, I did have a meeting, um, if you want to call them the Joint Task Force between the LEC and the Eo... and the EMA representatives. Not quite everybody made it, but enough of us did and we had a good discussion, um, all things 911, EMA, uh, related, uh, just a kind of informal get-together, but that was not at the ELC location at the LEC at 11 o'clock last Tuesday. And then thank you, everybody, for showing up for the canvassing when I was not able to get here that day. That's all I had.
Uh, I didn't have any other than our Tuesday meeting, whole meeting.
You were canvassing.
Canvas Thursday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Whatever they had. Hey, I get elastic with a blur for me, too.
Um, I did... we were here for the canvas on Wednesday and I would give a shout to the Chairman for covering for me for the food, the Mobile Food Factory was Wednesday night and I, after spending my morning here, I was running late, so Dave went and helped. And what'd you say, there was 100 and...
135 families went to go. We ran out of food.
Awesome. That is what we... that's what we try to do so that you don't have to haul anything back up to the...
Probably a case of cereal left, but they started out with it. Wow, from here to Sandy, you know.
That's good.
Boxers and they... they went through them.
That's awesome, so... That was, uh, and then yesterday I did a little drive out through Bradgate and I went up the north, uh, to the 35 there. And I wanted to go in there and see if... how much water beans that pipe is now connected. Um, it's got a pretty good flow of water. I don't know about, uh, if there's going to be any sand. I visited with John Norman and he said, "As much water has been coming through that, he said, "I think we're pretty sure that that thing will be flushed." So, but there is a blowout over there on the... or suckhole on that, uh, piece of ground just above, like Hall Farm. Home organs there, right above there, so I told Trish we're going to have to either... How old is Beans King's here yet? Would they go back and fix it? There's really...
Is it on the main though?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's on the main, yeah.
Yes, they do.
It should be needing to be contacted first.
I... I, uh, told Trish we need to get ahold of, uh, Rick and have him, A, go down there and John said it's pretty easy to find.
It could be just... it could be just settling, but maybe not.
Oh, I hope it's an easy fix, but while the machine's here, there's no sense in hiring somebody to come back because I don't know if we're going to get him to come back after the...
In regards to that, and I mentioned last week, any sediment that's at the outlet of the...
I got a couple of pictures I used to...
Same, same.
It looks pretty good.
Does it? Okay, any... anything that is involved with the project, now is the time to get it touched up. Because I agree, 100% proof, uh, yeah, they just need to get it, uh, fixed.
And then we'll visit after here about the other drainage deals, so that's all I had.
Okay, um, I, on Monday, the 11th, uh, we met as a quadrant here at, um, the courthouse to put together a letter for County Social Services, um, to Webster County for, um, to stay within the region. Uh, Tuesday I was here and then I also went down to the, um, Webster County, um, meeting for County Social Services. So I went to the Webster County Supervisor's meeting. Wednesday, um, we... I did the canvassing here. Thursday, I was at Webster County Board of Supervisors Special Meeting for County Social Services. The way I said last week was a blur. Um, let's see. And then Friday morning, I went to Storm Lake for the Iowa Workforce Region One meeting to work on that. We've got the 2080 almost completed, we had to do some more, and that was what that was for, to get that done. Um, so then, um, Kyle Stricker, who's the Chair, he has taken it back to his county attorney and then also the Iowa Workforce Development County Attorney. And then once we get it all, we need to get them, we get it all figured out, then we'll have to bring it back here and every county will have to accept, accept it and we'll put it on file and... And we'll have... I'll have John, I already warned John when we came to look at it. And I think that was it.
Um, I need to back up the truck, I missed one thing.
Okay.
Before I go ahead.
Same, same protocol here.
Yeah.
On, uh, Thursday, I stopped down to Andy Lemon's office and picked up a copy of the right-of-way agreement that he's written up. I took it up to John to have him look at. I thought he would have got it back to me, but he hasn't, whether he's...
That's up here.
So it's upstairs, I'm going to run upstairs after the meeting and see if he's had a chance to look at it. And then basically, if he says it's okay, we'll sign it and send it out.
Okay.
And then he'll... I had told Andy not to write up the others till we get this approved, then he just has to change the names and label descriptions.
Thank you.
So I did all that work and changed all of them.
Right.
Oh, I also forgot to... I was on a phone conference, I don't know if you need to know that, but it was for the HR Committee for County Social Services on Wednesday after I left here.
Oh, thinking of that.
We're just bouncing off of each other here.
I didn't write this down either. Um, Friday morning at 11, I was on the phone conference with our insurance company. And I... I want Diane to come down because she sat in on it also. She may have actually physically went down, I told her she probably should because phone things aren't that good.
Yeah.
I don't know if she did or not. Uh, but they got this new wellness program they're wanting to push through.
Or this is our insurance companies pushing it.
Yeah, yeah, Three Rivers.
Right.
Um, it's... it sounds so cheap, but when you do the math, it really isn't cheap. So I'll come and bring Diane down here and we'll talk it over so we at least we're talking about the same thing after our meeting.
Are they saying that it'll make our people healthier and so it'll cut down our policy costs?
Yep, that's their theory.
But a lot of...
Kind of like telling you smoking's bad for you.
Mm-hmm.
But if you don't quit smoking, it doesn't help.
That's the person that's figuring it out.
Right. All right.
She's not going to smoke away.
I'm done, I'm done, I'm done.
All right, I got to go back to the fourth and after the meeting, I went up and looked at DD4 up by Hardy and seen what they was talking about. It's a mess up there. I left a message on a... I wrote a note and put on the tractor to move away from the dredge ditch a little bit.
That's south of Hardy, right?
South of Hardy.
I was, uh, pre-lips concerned. Yep. It looks like, did you go back and look?
Yeah.
They did say away, didn't they?
Yeah.
I thought so.
I saw a spring up there and back off about 33 feet because it was a driveway and they needed a little bit of driveway.
They...
But I didn't talk to anybody, I just left a note.
It looks like they got their...
In regards to that, did you find out who the contractor was that cleaned the ditch that left the spoils pile back there?
No. Well, they've got somebody coming in, sounds like to clean it or it's already been cleaned.
Or level it off or clean it or smooth it off.
Was that one from Wallingford or something?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what it was.
B and D or B and D or N and D.
They talked to somebody and Phillips... Phillips?
Philip.
They talked to somebody and that, uh, somebody cleaned it, leveling it for them. Okay, 11th, there was no meeting. Uh, Tuesday was gone. Wednesday, I was here for the meeting and then Wednesday I had the mobile food truck. Everything went good down there. Um, Wednesday night, I went and worked at the Dakota City Council meeting. Talked about the dog shelter and got donation from them. And, uh, Friday, I went up here and drove the ditch that they're complaining about up there by the old dump. And, uh, that's all I had left. Um, on that, did you... are we up to date with Region Five has met? Like usually comes to Melody and then up here in EMA. Are we up to date on that?
Oh, you mean as far as billings? I think so. The last one that came by came through. So there shouldn't be one for... until the next quarter.
Okay. Well, April's back to work off of maternity, we don't have a meeting.
I don't think so. I mean, order.
Find out.
I can double check them too, so, for you.
Double check, because it always comes to her down there, so...
Okay.
We're going to need you, like, this Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay. You got anything, Peggy?
Nope. We did... no, we did training last Tuesday, Wednesday, on the new website. Um, the gentleman was very friendly, very nice, but he went through it so fast, we were all just overwhelmed. But they did send some links we could check on, um, told us how we could get support from them as we're putting new things on. Um, everything that's currently on our website will transfer to the new one, so it's not like we have to change anything. It's just, if there's something else we want to put on there, we have to be trained on that. So we'll get through that and hopefully, um, by next month, we'll have it live.
Hmm, good.
Wow.
Well, with... with the final, final talk of the canvas, whatever we've been doing, I... I can only imagine how you guys have felt. So our thanks to you and your staff, or the amount of work that, like Rick said earlier, they think they've made it better, more efficient. I don't know if it's been streamlined or... I don't think it's been streamlined, but I guess that's the way the government works, so... We do thank you, appreciate it. I wish we could have a fund that we could...
Couple of weeks come, I... Put in a lot of hours because I go by here and every time I come this late, there's a little white car sitting up.
Yeah, so...
I'd go home and my husband would say, "Did you get them today?" "No, I have to go back tomorrow."
Well, we appreciate it.
And if you're compiling the numbers, you have to create the forms. So as you're setting up the forms, you're making sure that everything's in the right place and that nothing is... and then you find something's wrong and then you have to...
This is all in this stuff again.
Yeah, it's all in this stuff again. And then when we changed our...
Seal.
No, we changed our canvas from Tuesday to Wednesday. So every single abstract that you guys signed last week had to be changed because the dates were different. So now it'll be good to put the books away and just say, "I think we're done."
Well, good.
Have signed a whole pile of papers again.
Not this one.
There's some done for you guys.
The ones are done. We won't make you sign those again.
Peggy, I got a question for you.
Yes.
We need to get... did you get the, um, email on the resolution for County Social Services for the...
Yes, but it's been one of those things that's been on the back burner. I found it over the weekend.
I didn't get it. So I asked her to send it to me so at least I had it. So I just wanted to make sure that you... and I figured with the... the election, I think it probably was, I just wanted to make sure you had it.
Yeah.
So we can get that on one of the agendas before...
Hopefully, next week.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. I can close that up now.
Anything else to discuss or come before the board?
I make motion to adjourn if we're to that point.
Second?
Mm-hmm.
I think we're at that point.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, carry. We are adjourned.